Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Silva Board of Commissioners to order. First thing on our agenda is to approve our agenda. So you should have that in front of you. I would entertain a motion to approve this.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there any discussion? Otherwise, I'll ask Amanda to do a roll call.
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda is approved. Now comes the time for public comment. And I understand we do have people wishing to make public comment. I will remind them to state their name and that they have five minutes to make their comments. Amanda, do you know?
I have, yeah, I have all three of them here. I'm just waiting to admit when you call them.
Okay, I'll just call them in the order. I have them listed here. Tracy Mann.
Okay, she's joining.
Okay. Good morning.
Tracy, you can speak now.
Sorry, I didn't realize that. I was having trouble calling in via my phone.
That's okay.
Okay, so thank you for giving me the time this morning to provide comments. And honestly, I could talk for hours about my concerns with increasing the police budget in Silva. But for this statement, I'm just going to keep this very brief and direct. I think that any increase in the budget for the town should benefit the largest number of the townspeople. Right now, the dispatch data shows that the business owners in town and the banks are actually benefiting the most from the police. In 2020, they did 12 residence checks and 4,445 business and bank checks. So if you put those checks together, businesses and banks, that's the number you get. And so this is really supporting the local businesses, not the majority of the people that live here. If you increase the police budget at this point, you're essentially supporting the local businesses and not the local people. Resources keep people safe. We know that resources provide people with what they need. This town has a lot of people hurting. This town has a lot of people who need services like substance use services, like mental health treatment, access to healthcare. Food pantry use over the past year was extremely high. Food, housing, medical care are all things that could go directly into people who live in Silva, like directly improve their lives. But if you choose to increase the police budget, you're actually prioritizing the profits of the businesses instead of prioritizing the people, especially the most vulnerable people in town. And you're actually prioritizing property instead of prioritizing people. And I understand that the police slogan is to protect and serve, but the numbers clearly show that the Silva Police Department is protecting and serving the profits and the businesses, and only a small handful of the people who own property. So, I mean, we honestly need a new system of policing. And in my opinion, we need a complete overhaul of how people in mental health crisis and people in addictions and people who are in poverty are treated. But in the meantime, the town board should absolutely not increase the police budget in Silva and should especially not increase taxes on residents during a pandemic for an increased police budget. I mean, we need to fund the people of Silva directly and not fund more police. So that's, that's all I have for this morning. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Next, I have Nathan Mann.
I can hear him in the next room saying that he's...
There you go.
Press the unmute. Am I on?
Yes, you're on.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. For the, my name is Nathan Mann. For the past 20 years, I've been a public health economist for nonprofit research organizations. And I've looked at tax policy and cost effectiveness, particularly related to government expenditures on public health. And I just want to speak today against why I'm against raising taxes. So last year, Silva spent 1.41 million on the police department, which is about 80% of the total property taxes collected. And the rate of officers per 1,000 people in Silva is already about 1.5 times higher than the national average for small towns in the US, and it's higher than Franklin, Brighton City, and Waynesville. I looked through the SPD dispatch data, which includes calls for service and officer actions that are logged. I'd be happy to share the results from my analysis with anyone who's interested. I have way more than I, and I have time today, so I'm just going to hit the highlights. But what does data show is that SPD conducted about 5,345 more activities in 2020, which is a 59% increase in activities logged. But only a tiny amount of that came from increased calls for service, which went from 318 to 713. And responding to alarms and investigating suspicious people or vehicles has been pretty stable over the past six years, with a slight bump of about 277 extra activities last year. What's striking, though, and what clearly accounts for this, this huge jump, is voluntary proactive discretionary activities that SPD is conducting. So nearly half, about 45% of all the activities logged into the system for last year were under that voluntary security check and patrol category. And those discretionary actions accounted for 85% of the increase in 2020. If that's something that, that they've been doing and not recording in the system, then there hasn't been an actual increase in service that those data are suggesting. On the other hand, if those data are accurate, then that increase is essentially self-directed and discretionary increases on their own part that are accounting for that, that increase in burden and service. And that's particularly striking, given the low level of crime in Silva. By comparison, those voluntary checks and patrols occurred at a rate of nine times higher than any activities related to potential crime in 2020. Activities related to crime were only 639, which is only 5% of the total in 2020. It's obvious that local businesses have been the major beneficiary of that extra attention. So the security checks for businesses were 4,445. And those accounted for, the business checks accounted for 34% of all activities in 2020 and 67% of the, of the increase from 2019 to 2020. In contrast, community checks were only 522, and only 12 of those were designated as being for residences in town. So in 2020, we're dealing with the unprecedented global pandemic and nationwide protests for social justice. Maybe SPD ramped up those checks anticipating the possibility for increased crime during lockdowns while businesses were closed, or fear riots and violence. If that's the case, and those fears were unfounded, crime decreased in 2020, and Silva did not experience any riots or violence. Last year was a weird year, and we shouldn't use that as baseline moving forward. We don't need more officers, and we certainly don't need increased taxes to pay for more unnecessary policing. We need SPD to stop conducting so many self-directed voluntary actions that are not legally mandated and that primarily benefit private businesses in town. I would rather see Silva use its limited resources to invest in people rather than overpolicing to protect businesses from a level of threat that does not exist. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Chris Taber. Ms. Taber, are you there?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ms. Taber, can you mute your computer?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
Good morning.
Wait, Ms. Taber, can you mute your computer? We're getting feedback. There.
Okay, how's that?
That's great.
Okay, sorry about that. Good morning. I own, I'm Chris Taber. I own a home in town, and I'm totally a...
We're getting feedback.
I think you need to stop your YouTube video.
Okay, how about that?
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Good morning. I own a home in town, and I am totally opposed to raising taxes this year. In 2016, you voted to raise the tax rate from 30 cents per $100 to 42.5 cents per $100 because revenues were down due to the recession. Revenues are up, and a 14% windfall is outrageous, while so many people are hurting financially. The tax rate should be adjusted downward, not up. I'm exceptionally opposed to using a tax hike to fund more police officers since two positions haven't even been filled. And once they are, it will result in four officers on night shift, three on day shift. That is more than enough for a town of only 2,500 people, especially since the Sheriff's Department provides backup on many calls. David Nessler's analysis is spot on. Lastly, I would like to call the board's attention to the fact that VIA offers free CIT, crisis intervention training, which every officer should be required to take. I am skeptical that the town and the police department are taking advantage of free resources that are available. All of that to say, don't raise taxes, and I will be watching this vote very carefully. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? That's all that I had on my list. All right, we will move on to our report. Mayor's report. I have been attending some of the League of Municipalities, City Vision conference lectures and things. And I was just appointed to participate in a roundtable discussion with the National League of Cities and the US Treasury. There's seven other mayors besides me that is going to be, that'll be on that roundtable this afternoon. And we will be discussing the American Rescue Plan, specifically some of the details in it and how it affects towns like ours. We are actually grouped in the non-entitlement group, which is any cities and towns under 50,000. And I'm going to try to make sure that they know that a town of 2,800 is totally different from a town of 50,000 or 40,000 or even 10,000. And we will, there will be some details that they're working out on how we get our money and how it can be used. So I'm going to go to bat for Silva and see if, and other towns our size, to see if we can get it so that they don't lump us with all of those. And that's really all I have to report. Barbara?
I'd just like to say how happy I am to see all the new businesses. There's been a lot more activity in downtown Silva lately. And I also want to thank our first responders for having to go to several things that, one tremendous accident in Dillsborough. And I appreciate all of them and the time that they give to us. Let's see. I think that's basically what I have to say today.
Thank you, Barbara. Greg?
I have to give my report with my cat today. He won't let me go. Just a quick thing. I attended a meeting with the Region A Council of Government with the mayor the other day. And there was a few business owners in town. And I just want to report that everybody seems to be really happy about the direction that the town has taken. And, you know, I sort of echo Barbara's comments there. One thing that I did hear that we could do that's really inexpensive and would go a long way is to have some little touches around town. Pocket parks, the little bump outs, just plant some plantings, aesthetics. Those little touches go a long way. People don't really think that they're there, but they are there. They're in, they're in there. Everybody knows that Silva is a really beautiful and cute little town, but those little, those little finishing things, I think, would go a long way. And I think if we have a little bit of extra money at the end of the year, that we could do some things like that. And that's, that's all I had today.
Hey, Greg. David?
Yeah, the only thing I have real quick is I saw the proposal the county submitted for the statue wording. And I just got to say how absolutely ignorant I think that proposal is. Writing E pluribus unum on a Confederate statue. And I think it reflects very poorly on Silva. And that's the only comment I have today.
Thank you, Dave. Ben?
Good morning, everybody. Yeah, I don't have any, anything huge to talk about this morning. I did want to congratulate you, Mayor Sossman, for getting reelected for the North Carolina League of Municipalities Board, getting reelected. That's awesome. It's great to have Silva represented, represented there, and I appreciate your work on the board. The other small thing is that, just want to remind folks that the COVID ward at Harris is still open and still has patients there. So still, it's not over, and everybody still be careful out there.
Thank you, Ben. Mary?
I have a couple of things. First off, I can't remember when the Greening of the Mountains date is. And I went to the Main Street Silva site, and it still says April 24th. So if that could be updated, and also if you could just tell me when the date is again, so I could put it on my calendar, I would appreciate it. Second thing, I wanted to just say thank you to all of our staff with the town of Silva. The last couple of weeks, I know several of us have been asking administration questions, and I really appreciate the promptness that I've gotten back in emails to help understand the budget more and decisions we have to make going forward. Thank you to the police department. I've noticed some extra concerned securities that they've taken care of in a prompt fashion. I'm very appreciative of that. And then I also want to mention Jake and the Public Works. I was driving back to work yesterday, and I saw them out there doing the finishing touches on the bump out near Evolina Street. And I think Greg could probably be the only one on the board that could sympathize with me so much with his relationship to Evolina Street. But it's a very dangerous crosswalk, and I'm so pleased and grateful that that improvement has been completed. The third thing is Tuckassee River cleanup for the second year is being handled just a little bit different with the COVID situation. It's in its 37th year, and they're not able to conduct it the way that they have in years past. And as a, as a paddler, I'm noticing on the river, it's, it's really filthy. So between April 19th and 23rd, between tomorrow and a few days ago, Kay at WCU is asking people to submit pictures where they're picking up trash. It doesn't have to be on the river, just anywhere in Silva. And you can pick up a t-shirt if you want from the event. I plan to go out there after this meeting today and Saturday or Sunday to try to help with the trash. If you feel like it's in your heart to do so, I encourage you to, to get out there and pick up some trash, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. That's all of our commissioners' reports. Now we'll have our managers' report.
Good morning. The Greening of the Mountains date is Saturday, August 28th, from 10 to 4. And Mayor Sossman, congratulations on your second term on the league board. That's very exciting for all of us and for Silva, and we appreciate your hard work on that. I know it takes a lot of time. The draft budget was emailed to you all Tuesday afternoon. Please review it prior to our work session Thursday, April the 29th. And please be sure this is, this work session at 9:00 AM on the 29th is on your calendar because it's not a typical meeting date. We'll review both the draft budget and the schedule of fees. John, Eric, and I are working our way through the first draft of the zoning ordinance rewrite. And I'll go ahead and just a quick, brief with the planning board update while I'm on this. The format for the new ordinance will have a detailed table of uses that are allowed in each district. And then the text of the ordinance will specify the standards and the requirements. The new article will have supplemental standards and, that are listed for what's required in each district. And then you look at the table to see if that is allowed in the district. So it's, there's going to be a lot of transition to it. The planning board is working their way through the table of uses. Withers Ravenel is updating the table and revising it to show what's in the current ordinance, what's recommended, and reorganize it before the planning board reviews it again. I will say that this process is taking longer than I had expected, but I think we'll end up with a better result. I'll keep you updated on this process, but I don't know that it's, I don't foresee it being done by the end of June. And as far as employment updates, Betty Stanley's been hired as the new park attendant for Public Works. Betty was previously a custodian at the school system central office. We also conducted an officer interview last week, and the interview process for the assistant chief will begin in May. Mill Street streetlight installation, I bet Jake wants to talk more about that, but it's expected to begin this week. And applications are starting to come in for Greening of the Mountains. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Paige.
All right, I have a quick question, but probably for Jake. How long will it take for the streetlights to be installed?
I hope that they'll all be as part of my report, in fact, but I hope they will be in and burning by the end of the month.
Jake, let's just move on to your Public Works report.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. A lot of good news in this report. So, yeah, the bump out at Evolina is completed. So the guys are actually doing finishing touches and moving benches and planters over there. As we speak, the new sidewalk at the end of Main, near the new Eldas, will be started on Monday and hope to have that completed by the end of next week as well. Mill Street streetlights were setting bases currently and pulling conduit. So at the end of, hopefully at the end of next week, but certainly by the end of the month, those will be up and shining, and we can get that completed finally. The contract with Equinox Environmental for Phase 1 of the Bridge Park green infrastructure improvements has been executed, so they are working on that currently. Small update, Paige and I have had one meeting with the railroad regarding having the public restroom at the, what is currently the Pocket Park. And they're putting together purchase option or long-term lease options there that, that is deeded railroad property. And we don't know anything certain yet, but the short version of that is it's going much better than I expected. So that's, that's, that's a pleasant surprise there. Next week, I'll be attending basic purchasing course through the school, the North Carolina School of Government. So I'm anxious to get that completed. That will help with Allen Street. And Ian's here, and he'll be answering questions on the, both of the Kessel reports for you guys today. So looking forward to that as well, if there are any questions.
Greg?
Yeah, so Evoline, you're gonna stripe the other side of the street to match the new...
Huh?
You're gonna, you're gonna stripe the other side? I'm talking about painting the lines on the road, so you're gonna...
Right, well, you're gonna move the, the DOT will do it. We won't do it. They're gonna move the crosswalk to the other side of Evolina Street so that pedestrians will be in the field of view and out of the way of people coming down Evolina and trying to pull out. Whereas right now, they're directly in the path of those people.
So we won't have a crosswalk on the west side of Evolina Street anymore? Are they gonna take that out, or?
That, that'll be up to the DOT, but I imagine they'll, they'll take that one out as well, since we don't currently have two that close together.
I was just wondering, maybe they want to stripe the whole, the whole thing, from the new one to the old one, so it's just one big crosswalk?
I'll bring it up. Glad to be talking about crosswalks again.
I mean, their whole thing is about visibility, and if you have a giant crosswalk, that's pretty visible.
Sure, that, that makes sense. Like I said, I'll bring it up. I can't promise...
The point of moving it was to keep people from being hit where it currently is.
See, when people come down Evolina Street currently, they're looking back up West Main to see, to see when they can pull out. And standing in the crosswalk where it is currently would be in the path of that vehicle. Ideally, they would look both directions, but we all know that that isn't always the case.
Well, I'm glad to hear about the railroad. That's really encouraging. You, and you mentioned Equinox. Can you elaborate on that?
So, yeah, we've, in last year's budget, you guys allocated money to move forward with Phase 1 construction documents for the green infrastructure improvements at Bridge Park. And what that looks like at this time is paving the gravel side, bio swales, doing drainage infrastructure improvements from Mill Street into Bridge Park and, and a few other things there. But, and, and I have a small conceptual for what that'll look like if you're interested.
So this is different than the report that we got with the drawing and the, and the cost estimates?
No, this is the next step to that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Paige, when we're done with this, they'll hand us a set of plans that we could then hand to a contractor and say, okay, build this.
Okay, and we're, just to be clear, we're not going with the bathroom at Bridge Park at this point?
I mean, it's not out of the question, no, but if we're right now operating under the assumption that it'll go at the Pocket Park, unless that, for some reason, won't work.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions of Jake?
A question, small question. Just the, and I don't know, maybe it's Chris's thing, Chief Hatton's thing, is the little, the speed sign on Mill Street, it seems like it's always out of batteries. Is there any way to hook that thing up to power? So it's like a drive-by at the time. There's a little dead battery symbol.
I can answer that, Chris. Yeah, the, so the reason that that thing is battery powered and not solo, solar powered is so it can be portable and we can move it around. The more functions we have it doing, the faster the battery draws out of there. Nobody's fault but mine that the batteries have been dead lately. We've had a lot of other things going on. So we'll try to stay on top of that a little bit better, Ben.
Okay, no problem. I mean, if we, if we're gonna keep it there, is there a way we could just have, if it's gonna be there most of the time, that we hook up a little solar power to it or something? I don't know. Just, sorry, and I don't want to make a big discussion about it.
Maybe we can talk of that later. Thank you. If there are no other questions for Jake, I will move on to the police department. Thank you. Um, if there are no other questions for Jake, I will move on to the police department report. Chief.
Good morning, Mayor. We're commissioners. Good to see everybody. It's warmer weather. Uh, it's good to see it, too. I tell you, I'm ready for summer. Um, so what I'm gonna do is give you kind of a rundown of what we've been doing for the last thirty days since I gave you our last report. Uh, we've been busy as always, and, uh, we had a, a couple officers coming up for vacations, so all of our command staff members, including myself, the assistant chief, uh, both our detectives have been, uh, we've actually worked regular patrol shifts so that folks can get some vacations and get some time away. It's been good, good for them, but, uh, put, put the strain on us. And we've answered over five hundred calls, and, uh, we heard some talk about proactive, like business checks, residence checks, all that. Take that, those aren't included in that number. So, uh, we do currently have two vacancies. We're within a matter of, uh, just, just a matter of days for filling one of those vacancies, it looks like, and then a matter of weeks for filling the other one. And then we'll be up to our fulling, our full staff, which would be very nice, uh, cause it has been tough and our applicants are not as plentiful as what they once were for a whole lot of reasons, I think. So, uh, feels good to be that close to being, to be in full staff. Uh, we have, again, the preliminary, uh, parts of a competitive process, hiring process for an assistant chief. This is a huge deal for our department. That position is crucial for us. And, uh, I can't talk about that without, uh, just saying a thank you to Rick Ross, who's retiring. If folks get a chance to reach out to him, he served us, I think, well for twenty-plus years. And so, um, uh, good luck to him and his retirement. And so also, we have, again, the logistical planning for greening up the mountains, getting ready for that. It's coming up really quick. All of a sudden, it feels like, um, we've had a few protest events, uh, this, during this last month. We have had, uh, as far as training goes, it's been sort of a slow month for training, but our, I will say, our entire PD right now is going through, taking an online course that's titled Responding to People in Crisis. I think that'll be helpful. I did get a chance to watch the NAMI Help Not Handcuffs, uh, webinar about the Kahoots program in Oregon. If you guys remember, we talked about that in one of the formal, former, uh, board meetings. I got a chance to watch that. Really interesting stuff in that. If you get a chance, you can still see it. Um, we're still continuing to review and update our department's policy manual, make sure we've got, uh, got the best policy that we can have. Uh, this month, we unveiled, I guess you would say, an entirely new body camera system for our department. So, um, the system we had before was aging, failing, uh, wasn't working the way it should be. So every officer has a new body cam. We have all new body cam software and a whole, whole different system. Excited about that. That's a big deal for us and, and just for a lot of reasons. The, you haven't heard us talking about needing funds for that. The, the system's gonna be pretty expensive, but we were able to buy those with grant funds, so that's a good thing. Also, uh, our evidence, we, we keep about, um, about four thousand or less, maybe a little less, uh, items of evidence and property that we have to manage and be accountable for. Also with the grant, uh, we were able to pay for a new software system, which takes us away from an old literally ink and, ink and paper system into a computer system with barcodes and, uh, scanners and that kind of thing. It's gonna make things so much easier, make us a lot more efficient. So again, grant funds, real excited about that. That's gonna be, uh, that's gonna be a big deal for us. We had, um, a couple, a couple notable situations we had this month that I wanted to mention is, uh, we had a couple, a couple heart attack, uh, like sort of very scary calls. We had a kidnapping that was, uh, reported to us, but after some investigation, we were able to find out it was unfounded. We didn't actually have the kidnapping, but, uh, the situation was scary for our officers, and we're glad that it turned out that way. Another one was, we had a three-year-old little girl that was missing when the caller called us, said she'd been missing for about nearly thirty minutes, which doesn't sound like a long time unless there's a three-year-old little girl missing, and thirty minutes sounds like a year. So that, uh, that's the call, that's one of those calls that just gives us, gives us all, um, serious heart palpitations. So officers responded. Uh, I can tell you, all of our command staff, we were all in the car heading that way. And the deputies and our officers worked together on that, and they found the little girl very quickly, very quickly. It was good, good. Um, that's a scary thing. Uh, as the mayor mentioned in one of our last meetings, we had, um, multiple families were the victims of two individuals who went through and, and broke into some cars in a neighborhood. And our night shift officers were able to quickly develop the suspects and able to make an arrest nearly immediately, uh, within an hour for sure, and, uh, get, get those folks their stuff back, which doesn't stop them from being victimized, but it's, it does help to get their stuff back right away. So we got a lot of compliments from that, some from the mayor. Thank you, mayor, for that. But, um, that was one. And then we had another notable situation where we had a rash of business break-ins. One night, uh, we had, uh, Fisher Moore, K and M Seafood, Zaxby, Silver Church of God, and a private residence all broken into, uh, or things stolen from. And, uh, that happened at night. Our officers were some, um, fortune, good fortune on that one, too. Our officers, the next day, were able to solve it, uh, and get the suspect charged. And, uh, ma- making arrests on that. We had some very happy campers, or very happy business folks for that one. So it's been, uh, it's been a, a sporty month. So just to hit some quick numbers for you, we had forty-four traffic crash investigations. That's about a thirty percent increase, around thirty percent increase from last month. So, and we're feeling that, a lot, a lot more accidents, so be careful out there. Twenty-seven disturbances or disputes. Uh, we only had one situation of domestic violence this month. We had, uh, eight health and welfare checks. Those can be a variety of things. Twenty-one reckless drivers, seventeen larceny thefts, shoplifting situations. We had six drug overdoses this month. Um, several of those, I can't say exactly how many right now, but several of those were saves with Narcan. Thank goodness for Narcan. Um, uh, so some really, uh, yeah, some really situations. I know one night, uh, I came in to work the morning shift for patrol, and the night shift before told me, we need more Narcan. We used every bit we could get our hands on that last night. So we, we were literally running out. So that's not a good, not a good problem to have. Um, thirty-three alarm responses. Uh, we were dispatched to twenty-two, uh, investigate suspicious activity by person situation, which is, that's a real common call. Cause when folks think somebody's doing something, or when somebody is doing something they shouldn't do, of course, people call us. And we had nine situations where we helped stranded motorists. Um, so everybody's working hard. Um, I think things are going, uh, on pretty well, but as things are opening up, we're really, we're really seeing it. Uh, as you guys, same when you're around town, you see businesses getting busy or whatever. Definitely, definitely seeing all that. So that's my report. Let's see if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, chief. Ben, you have a question?
Yeah, hey, hey, thanks, chief. Um, so with the Narcan, what, when Narcan's administered, what, um, what happens? What's the kind of protocol? What happens afterwards? And EMS gets called, and then, and typically what happens? Yeah, folks that you revive, if you will.
Well, it's, it's actually interesting. Uh, for us, we, um, I feel like we give out, we give out a lot of doses of Narcan, and then a lot of times it'll take, uh, I just heard of one this month. I think it took four, four actual, the little nasal units is how we give it to them, to their nose, and it took four, four of those to get the person to wake up. And so sometimes our officers get there first, sometimes medics get there first. But, uh, when the officers get there, they're unresponsive, they immediately give it to them, and if it didn't work, I give them another one. And so, um, they give it to them. A lot of times it makes these folks, they'll come to, um, it's interesting to see somebody wake up uh, via, via Narcan. If you've never seen it, it's something, they wake, I mean, they, it's like, it's like a movie where somebody just takes in a deep breath, wakes up and, and they usually have a, a terrible headache. They're not happy usually when they wake up. And, uh, a lot of times sadly, what we're seeing is we eat them, they're, we get them awake, they're stable, EMS comes, they help them. And unfortunately, a lot of situations, we see they don't want to go to the hospital. And they're like, well, I'm fine. And so we have to try to, like, hey, you're not fine, you know, just because you're awake doesn't mean you're fine. And when this wears off, you could overdose again, even though you haven't used any more, any, any more drugs. And so it's kind of a tense moment for us where we're just like, you really need to go get checked out. And so a lot of them go to the hospital, but some don't.
Yeah, thanks, cause, uh, that, we see that a lot. Um, you know, even if they do come to the hospital, um, as soon as someone's awake, they're, they're heading out the door a, a, as well. So it's, um, you know, I think that's always one of those spots for, um, a, a great spot for a brief intervention. But, um, uh, unfortunately, a lot of folks are not in the mindset, um, to be, um, you know, for the intervention and, and, and wanting help in that situation. Um, but, uh, it, it's, it'd be great if we can come up with something, not just on the police department, but, um, you know, some way to get, uh, a, a little bit more of intervention. Not that, anything more that you can do, but in order to get someone else in there, um, hopefully. But I can tell you that folks, when they do come in the hospital, you know, and we've got everything there, we've got social workers, I always try and have, um, some, somebody talk to them, sit down and talk to them about, um, treatment options, um, and, uh, you know, very, very seldomly will folks stick around for that. Um, they're usually headed out the door, and it's a, it's, it's a tough situation, and I guess, I guess that's my point. But thank you for kind of being out there on the front line, um, and, and at least bringing them back. You know, this is one of the things that are, it's referred to as the Lazarus drug, and I, I, I can second that. When fo- folks wake up, it's, um, it, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, thank you, Ben. And, uh, I mean, we care about people. That's always why I'm up for this business. But I don't want to say too much about it, but I do want to say this. We're working on some really, really cool things that are, that very well may address some of the things that you just said. So I won't get too far into it, because we're kind of early on in, in the idea phase of it. But I think we're, I think things we're working on when we get it into, uh, the form where we can present it to you folks. I think you're gonna be in, impressed and happy about, about these changes.
Any other questions for Chief Hatton? Barbara.
Chief, I'd just like to thank you and your officers, because these are trying times right now, and people are seeing a lot of things on TV, and a lot of people are sort of down on policing. But I want to thank you and your staff for how you, uh, conduct yourself in our town and how you're interested in helping our residents. So thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief. Next, we will move on to, um, the Main Street report. I see Julie and others.
We're all here this morning. Good morning. Thanks for having us. Um, congratulations, Mayor, on your appointment back to the League of Municipalities. That's a lot of time, so thank you for devoting that. Um, thank you to Jake and Public Works. Lot of stuff going on on Mill Street. Big changes. Appreciate that. And thank you, chief, for protecting us all. Business residents, thank you. Um, Mill and Main Street milestones, there's a lot of our businesses, um, celebrating milestones right now. Natalie Nicole is getting ready to celebrate their third anniversary. You may recall, they were on Mill Street, they moved to Main Street. Uh, City Lights just celebrated their tenth, and Melissa's Backstreet celebrated their sixth. There's a lot of businesses that have been here a very long time, so we're trying to just make a big deal about that, because when you're in business for a long time, it's a big deal. And it takes perseverance and encouragement along the way. Uh, let Sandy tell you about Mother's Day happenings coming up. Sandy, you're muted.
There we go. Hi, everybody. Uh, we are gathering Mother's Day specials from our, uh, restaurants and chocolate stores and wineries. So, um, I'll continue gathering and calling people this week, and then we'll get that posted so that we can spotlight the specials, and it's going to include a social media post. So we're kind of excited about that. Get everybody out, uh, eating local.
Absolutely. Um, and along with the Mill Street improvements, we did our share to spruce up Mill Street and took over a little pod at the corner of Ilde. Um, it's currently covered in plastic that I put there last night, but I'll uncover it a little bit later today. You see the before and after pictures there, so we hope that will, uh, last and unify that corner. Um, we did get, received the grant for the bicycle rack. It is forthcoming. We shared that information with Amanda and Paige and Jake, so they will take it from here and make sure that it's installed in the proper location.
Just really quickly, I wanted to tell Mary that, uh, thanks for pointing out the date of greening up the mountains. I just fixed it, so it's live on the website now.
Thank you, Kelly. I appreciate that.
Totally my fault.
No, no, thank you.
Um, kind of keeping with the sprucing up Maine and Mill Streets, um, we're gonna do a, uh, we're sponsoring a spr- a spring spruce up. So we've talked to a lot of businesses, uh, in downtown that want to have their windows cleaned. So we worked out a deal where, um, Crystal Clean is offering a discount for people who want to have their, their windows cleaned, um, for spring. And then we've also, uh, worked out a deal with, with Snake Song. Hopefully they'll, if anybody wants to have, uh, plants or flowers around their business, they can contact one of those two people and take care of that. And we're continuing our Ask the Expert, uh, campaign. Uh, in March, we, uh, highlighted Ar- Arsenal Artifacts. And, um, this month, we're gonna do In Your Ear Music. There's a video that was just posted, uh, on social media, uh, this, uh, Monday, I believe, Monday or Tuesday. And, uh, we're gonna do three more businesses in May and June. It'll be Treasures Unknown, Sassy Frass, and Dixie Mae Vintage in Underground in Silva.
Our live music is continuing during the brunch hours. Um, that's been very well received. Unfortunately, it looks like a hundred percent chance of rain this Saturday, so, um, we had scheduled Shane Mead. We're gonna rotate Shane to another Saturday most likely, because it looks like it's gonna rain. Um, but people are loving that, and it adds some atmosphere, combined with the jam market, having music on the other end of the street. That, um, has been helping, so we're gonna continue with that. We have Bohemian Gene coming up on May eighth. It's a husband and wife duo, and they sing. Um, it's everything from like Creedence Clearwater to just some, some light folk. Sandy?
Um, we're continuing to encourage visitors to grab some takeout and have a picnic in downtown Silva. We have a flyer that lists, um, two, it's probably about seven different locations where they can have a nice picnic outdoors. And, uh, we provide that as a digital flyer to all of our local restaurants. And we have them posted in the kiosk, and then I have them also in the lobby, lobby here at the, um, visitor center just to encourage people to get out. If they're not comfortable with going to a restaurant, they can do takeout and have a nice picnic.
This month, we also sent out our e-news to the district, so hopefully everyone received that. And we worked with Chief Hatton on, uh, spreading the word about our, uh, parking reminder to the district. And, um, sent that to everyone and also included it in our e-news. Uh, we submitted our monthly column to the Silva Herald, and just want to thank them again for giving us that space to spread the news about all the great things we have going on. And we're just continuing, continuing to, uh, make daily posts on the Main Street Silva, uh, Facebook page and to our Instagram accounts. Just want to thank everyone for everything they do, and thanks for this opportunity. We'll take any questions if you have anything.
Thanks to the three of you. Does anybody have a question? I do. I saw something about a sandwich competition.
Yeah, that's the Silva Art and Design Committee. Um, Jackie and her team are leading that, and we're cross-promoting it. Um, that's part of our Main Street Association Silva Art and Design, and they're doing a wonderful job with that. It's gonna start May first. You can see all of the, um, participants. You can have those sandwiches. You can vote for them. Encourage you to do that.
Thank you, Julie, Kelly, and Sandy. If there are no other questions, we will move on to our new business. The first item on our agenda is, um, the audit contract. Paige.
Yes, I've sent you all the audit contract with Burleson Early, um, that needs to be approved. The audit fee is eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars for the upcoming fiscal year budget. Lynn solicited bids in February, and Burleson and Early was the low bidder. They've done our audit the last few years, so the contract is, you all have that to approve. And then that'll be signed by the mayor, myself, and Lynn.
I'll be happy to pass that, um, make a motion to pass, uh, the audit contract.
Thank you, Mary. Is there any discussion? Then, um, I will ask. Then I will ask Lynn to do the roll call.
Barbara?
Yes.
David? Greg?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
That passes, so if you'll do whatever you have to, Paige, to get them notified that we can start working on our audit. Next on our agenda is the Allen Street Slope Failure Presentation by Kessel Engineering. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name's Ian Johnson. I'm one of our senior engineers here at Kessel Engineering. We did the geotechnical analyses of the both of the failure areas, the one above Bryson Park and the one more to the south below the Bob White Lane area. I'm sort of, I'm not sure what what type of presentation you're looking for. If you want to ask questions or you want an overview of the project, what how would you like me to best proceed?
Paige, do you have any ideas? Of course, we can't do the whole report, both of them, but maybe highlights or what do you think, Paige?
This was for you. You all asked for this, so whatever you all hope to get out of it after reviewing the report.
Comment board, have you reviewed the reports?
Yeah, I think I think just like a general summary would be kind of nice on the conclusions of it. And then I have a few questions I could ask afterwards.
And feel free, if if something I say isn't clear or too technical or you you need an additional explanation, please feel free to interrupt me and we can sort of circle back to that or, you know, just stop right there and talk about it. Okay, so the the larger of the two failure areas, the one above Bryson's Park, everyone has at least seen the pictures, I imagine, in the report, in that initial report. We did the exploration last early summer last year. Shortly after it happened, we did geotechnical borings in the in Allen Street, there's a service bench for Twasa. In the middle of that slope, we did borings there and then we did several down at the bottom at Bryson Park. The the primary takeaways from that exploration were that the the failure that occurred was very likely a combination of there's a low or a relatively shallow, if you will, groundwater table that is in that present in that slope. And so a combination of that relatively weak residual soils, those are native soils that are that they haven't ever been transported before. They're weathered-in-place soils. So those residual soils were fairly weak. And then there there were some significant rain events. And that that is likely part of what triggered that movement there. So the the options after reviewing, after doing the analyses of collecting the field data and the lab data, the the recommendations that we provided were sort of twofold in order to stabilize that area. The first being to install something that are called horizontal drains, which is special, a specialty contractor will install and they essentially will be used to help lower the groundwater in that slope. That has the benefit of helping to that the higher groundwater table helps causes the soils to be, it decreases their strength. So by lowering that groundwater table, that that's a help to stabilize it. The the second thing was to install something called either soil nails or ground anchors, which which would basically provide a mechanical stabilization of that slope to help hold it in place. And then and then after that point, repair work could be done along Allen Street in that section to repair the pavement section and, you know, make that serviceable again in that area. The the second failure area that was looked at is to the south of that primary one. It's sort of just to the north and to the south or to the northeast and the southwest of Bob White Lane, which is a small residential road that intersects with Allen Street. Those so that really was a lot less severe in Allen Street itself. We had some tension cracking that formed in those areas at at two distinct locations. And there there was not the significant vertical drop that we saw over at the Bryson Park failure. The we performed geotechnical soil test borings at the top of that failure area in Allen Street where we had access. And the conclusion for that report and the recommendation there was that at this time, we believe that those failures or that that the tension cracking showing up is more related to a localized failure associated with the fill slopes that form Allen Street in that location. We did not feel at this time that they're related to the the other failures that are happening happening on the property below associated with that neighboring property that goes down to Chipper Curve Road. The recommendation there, again, similar to the to the prior recommendation, with the exception of we didn't feel like de-watering was necessary, but the utilization of soil nails to help stabilize the in-place area was what was recommended recommended for those fill slopes. The the sort of the caveat to all of that is the concern that the neighboring property, if there were continued issues and destabilization with that neighboring by neighboring, I mean, the property below between Allen Street and Chipper Curve. If there were continuing issues with that and they became, we started to see additional cracking in other areas of Allen Street asphalt in between the two areas that we have now or vertical drops. It would be indicative that the localized failure has or the localized movement has become more of a global issue and it's tying into that other property. So, you know, I I think long term, a a and this is something Jake and I have spoken about, but long term, the speaking with the property owner down there and sort of figuring out a long-term game plan with them is likely an important part of the the overall solution for that area. We don't think that's what's happening right now, but but it could be in the future. And that's that's sort of the take of what we have for now.
So a long-term solution would be installing the horizontal drains in that section as well?
Possibly, because, yeah, there, if you've driven down there, you've you've certainly seen the the water that comes out at the toe of that slope and where that's all coming down. I think they have a little bit more room over there where some grading work could also likely be done to soften that slope and and what that would do, and by by softening, I mean to to make the inclination, you know, less steep and to remove material. What what that could help with is essentially to unload the slope and help, you know, when you take weight off, it helps stabilize things with respect to slopes.
Yeah, so I'm questioning, so that I guess that's going to be our next thing is, you know, what we don't want to do is fix our fix Allen Street and 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 then all of a sudden, you know, the Chipper Curve part, the paper mill part, you know, undermines the the work we're doing and then we have to go back and do this. So I guess your recommendation at this time, though, is to go ahead and do what we can to fix, we, I mean, we can fix Allen Street, it sounds like, with drainage and soil nails and that will hold the road on the slope, basically. And then below it is going to be the paper mill's responsibility, paper mill or DOT, whoever. And we've got some time before that kind of gets into Allen Street, the town property or, you know, I that's that's for me, that's the tough thing. Do we want to fix, spend all this money and stabilize Allen Street and just have it, you know, kind of collapse from from underneath?
Sure, that and that that's the, I I think, an important consideration if if the money is spent to correct the upper area. And I think that conversation would need to be had with, in conjunction with the other property owner to sort of see how that can look. I mean, they certainly have a problem with with their property. But it and and it will, if if it exacerbates and goes moves up the hill, it will affect yours. So I I completely agree, the the a long-term solution involves them. It's a it definitely is that they need to go hand in hand, I feel.
So let's assume they do go hand in hand and we do come up with a solution with the soil nailing and the drainage down below. I mean, given the the slope there and the recommended slope of two to one, horizontal to vertical, and it being 1.3 in some places, is there a viable long-term solution? Or will this be an ongoing maintenance problem? So I mean, like even if the recommendations are followed, you know, is it going to be viable in the long term?
Sure, so the the implementation of soil nailing would be utilized in areas that, for example, where you have the existing fill slope where it's, you know, the 1.3 to 1, the soil nailing will hold that in at that existing inclination. So it is a viable solution in other areas where 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 they are able to grade it back and take off some of the load. And that that would all be things that would have to be looked at in an additional analysis. But it would it 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 certainly going hand in hand, soil nailing and laying that area back, I I think is, it's a long-term fix.
So you were saying, you know, it wouldn't be necessarily wise to fix that upper portion of the road above the paper plant property without having a solution involving the lower part being, you know, on the different stakeholder involved with that piece of property. But what about further down for the slide by Bryson Park? So it sounds like, you know, we have two different reports and kind of two different areas we're talking about. And it sounds like you're saying that these are actually isolated. Could we take care of the Bryson Park side? And, you know, wait until we get some various stakeholders involved with the other side and that not, you know, be negatively impacted by the slide that's further towards town, or do they really need to be done together? What's your opinion on that?
I I think, I think the if it was up to me, I would say the Bryson Park failure is a significantly higher priority. It's impacting your serviceability and it could be done separately. There there's not an indication that they're related directly that they that the two different areas tie in together. You know, I think I think you might see some cost savings if you could do everything all at once. You would have a single mobilization of a specialty contractor and, you know, to to do all of the work at once. But again, if if there's a time, if there's a time element required to get the information needed and coordinate with the other party, the other property owner, you know, you certainly could do just the Bryson Park failure and, you know, proceed with the second failure. It's it's also, you know, contingent upon if there's additional movement at that second smaller failure. Right now, it doesn't look pretty, but it doesn't, it's not really affecting your serviceability of that section of roadway. So it's, you know, it's still drivable.
Any other questions?
Jake, do you think, so I mean, yeah, if we did fix the road at that Bryson Park area, both Bryson Park area, I mean, are we improving our accessibility up there? If we if we have continual road problems with the section above the paper plant property anyway? Is that going to be?
You will be temporarily fixing it and then just kind of crossing your fingers that you're not doing the exact same thing when the other failure goes to the point that it's no longer drivable. Even though they're not occurring or that they are occurring independently of each other, I think it's just anybody's, I think it would be foolish to assume that the second failure won't continue to worsen. And while you're and repairing one without the other would be foolish, in my opinion. It would it would cost less, certainly, but I don't I don't know that that gets us any further down the road.
But to do the whole thing at once, we have to be, we have to be involved with the property owner of the second slide.
That's true.
Have we?
A significant portion of a repair like that is mobilization for a contractor. You can, I mean, there are certainly cost savings when we're talking about them getting their machinery here. We might as well do it while if we decide to do it. Yeah, we could reopen the road just by fixing the Bryson Park failure. I don't know how long we would be able to leave it open. That that would that will ultimately be the board's decision.
Have you had a conversation with the the property owner of the second slide?
Yes.
And what what was that like?
At that time, they were willing to explore options, but they were not willing to make any kind of remediation action at that time.
Yeah, I don't know why they would. I mean, it's going to be a lot of money and it's not, you know, the worst case scenario is Chipper Curve is usable, which they really don't use Chipper Curve there anyways. So I think we should keep that in mind. I don't know if we have any power as a town to, you know, to encourage them, you know, to do anything. But I I wouldn't be surprised if they just did nothing.
Any other comments?
I have a question maybe for Eric. I mean, what what's the, you know, we have a property owner whose property is failing and because of that, it's taking out a town-owned road. So what obligation does a does a property owner have to maintain their property to where it doesn't wash out a publicly owned street?
I'd have to look it up. There's the there's the trespass issue, but it's because it's done by an act of nature rather than negligence. I don't think they're liable. I'd have to look it up to give you a more depth. Um, I I'd have to look it up to to give you a more definite response, but I don't think they're liable, um, if it does, I don't think they have been. If they don't have the money, they don't have the money. It's pretty much like most things, it it. Goes down to how much and whether they're willing to spend that. Um, so I don't think it will happen regardless if they have a legal liability to do so or not, just because of the cost.
If it's a modified slope, like like that, that's not the natural slope, that's still an an act of nature that it fails.
Are we talking, am I all nominated? Do we need to know exactly which person we're talking about here? But was it the natural soap was created by, the unnatural soap was created by them or by us? And was it created by the creation of the road, or?
I don't know, yeah, good question.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Good question.
Everybody, let's direct our questions.
If we create, if it's, if if the, if the failure is a result of the road being cut, then technically that would be on us because we created. And if you look at it that way.
Yeah, can we get back um to um the report? We can have the discussion about whose fault it is um at a later date, but um.
Just one more question of Ian. One more quick one from Ian. What does the finished product look like, like the, when you, like, say we did the repair at Bryson, what would, what would the slope look like?
So uh, what we recommended was uh, they would, they would put in the nails and. Actually face the slope with something called a TECO mesh, which is basically a steel mesh. Um, it it allows for a soft finish where instead of having like a a wall or something that uh. Oftentimes, these soil nail walls, if you look them up, they'll be, they'll have a shot creep facing, and it's it's. We're engineers and we don't do aesthetics and they look bad to us, so, uh, you know, that that just doesn't look real good. Um, but with the TECO mesh, there are soft finish in that, um, you know, your your vegetation will grow through it. And it won't be visible, you'll you'll basically have a uh, a green slope at that point. So that's, that's how that would end up looking um at the Bryson Park location.
Thanks, thank you.
Any other questions of Ian? Thank you so much. These reports and your report have given us a lot to think about. So, thank you very much. Um, we'll move on to our next um item on our agenda.
Thank you, Ian.
You're welcome, thank you.
The criminal justice police presentation by Dr. Caravellis.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me today. Um, I was asked to come offer my perspective about policing in Silva in general. Um, and then more specifically, to add some thoughts to the discussion around the Silva Police Department's request for more officers. Um, just to give you a really brief background, um, I am a professor of criminology and criminal justice, and my areas of specialization are social justice and the law. Minorities, crime and social policy and interpersonal violence. Um, I currently serve on the Board of Directors for the Center for Domestic Peace, which is our local domestic violence agency. Um, and I'm a victim advocate for our clients. Uh, my uh German Shepherd, Alice, and I um escort them to court and sit with them when we have clients coming into uh the office. Um, I'm also the Chair of the Police Community Advisory Committee here at Western Carolina University, which we just created in the last year. Um, to kind of act as an intermediary between the campus community and our law enforcement department. I mean, most importantly, I'm a tenured resident of the town of Silva. Um, I do live within town limits. Um, my field experience, why I'm kind of here talking to you. Um, I worked with the Tallahassee Police Department answering non-emergency calls and assisting the Public Information Officer. I've worked with the Florida Legislature's Commission on Capital Cases, researching death row um cases, making work foundations to the Governor's Office. Um, I've worked in three different correctional facilities as an academic instructor. Um, and I was a crime intelligence analyst with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, um, working with the Career Offender Unit, the Missing Children Unit. And the Sexual Offender Predator Unit. So I've had about twenty years' experience working in various branches of the criminal justice system. I've um. Read all the reports and briefs, and um I've spoken with uh community members who are concerned and interested in the issue of additional law enforcement. Um, I've spent hours, literally hours, speaking with Chief Hatton. Um, and I wanted to start off with the good news. I think if we can kind of zoom out a bit on this issue. Everyone in this town wants the same things, and I think some of those things are good outcomes for community members. Um, I think they want positive police citizen interactions. I think they want open lines of communication between the community and Silva PD. And I think that they want to move towards connecting citizens with resources that can help them get out of the system. And when I say everyone, I mean law enforcement as well. Um, it's very frustrating for officers to respond to the same. Um, residents or the same situation over and over again, because that's taking up resources that we could be using for other things. So everybody kind of wants people to get out of the system, right? This is kind of the overarching goal that we have. Um, I think there's a fair amount of confusion um and debate around how many officers a town our size needs. I know that we keep throwing around um the figure of twenty eight hundred. Um, and if we were a standalone town of twenty eight hundred without the university next door, without um thirty thousand people using the one oh seven thoroughfare every day. Um, I think that maybe we could be having that conversation, but um Silva PD is not only tasked with. Policing and providing service to the town of Silva, to those twenty eight hundred residents. They need to provide service to anyone who happens to be here at any given point in time, and. Um, I drive back and forth six times a day between Callowee and Silva, and I mean, I think I see. State tags from about ten different states every single time that I'm kind of heading through. I know you all do the same thing. Um, and as an aside, I don't want to take too much of the board's time, but if anybody would like, outside of this meeting, wants to talk about jurisdictional hierarchy. Which is who polices what? Um, so for example, if a call comes in. To um an accident on one oh seven and is within town limits. Um, if we have an available officer, Silva PD is the first to respond. If our officers are tied up, then Jackson County will step in. And so um, even though Silva's within Jackson County, there's still a hierarchy of who gets kind of dispatched to those calls, so. Um, I know that we'd like to see more of a shared resource situation going on. Um, but law enforcement is decentralized for a reason. We do want separate departments responding to separate calls. So, but we can talk about that at a different time. I just kind of wanted to point out that we are responsible for everything within town limits is that the first um. People on call. Um, another thing is that I think there's a lot of misconception about what law enforcement officers do. Um, we call them calls for service because while they do enforce the law. They are tasked with providing assistance to community members. Um, when I answered non-emergency calls, if people don't know the answer to anything, they do call the police department. I mean, we got calls about college kids playing music too loud, or a neighbor's dog defecating in their yard, or. Someone parked the wrong way on a one-way street, you know, it's, so they literally are the first to respond, or at least to field those questions. Um, and and I think that part of that, I know we've had a lot of discussion about um. Deterrence, right, checking businesses for lock doors and whatnot. Um, from a criminological perspective. Um, people pay attention as to whether you have a police presence or not. So if you see police cars out and about, people note that. Um, before giving this talk, I was um, yesterday in my class, I asked my students, A. How many officers they thought that that we had per shift in the town of Silva, and they guessed between six and ten per shift based on the number of cars they kind of saw driving around. And so I think what they don't realize is we. When you're on patrol, you see the same car kind of, you know, driving different routes, and it gives the impression that you have more people on the street than you do, but people do, I think, note when that's kind of happening. Um, but I will tell you from my experience um working with the Center for Domestic Peace. Um, we rely on our police department for lots of things that aren't necessarily criminal in nature, and I'll give you an example. Um, we don't have an extensive taxi service here in town, and so oftentimes domestic violence situations are are civil and not criminal. If someone's simply trying to file a protective order um and get to safe housing, um, we will oftentimes call. Um, Silva PD to see if they can give them a lift to safe shelter, because we don't have any other individual to kind of do that service for us. Um, if we have um a client who is staying in a hotel within town limits. Um, we as advocates and as an agency physically cannot go there for safety purposes, we cannot be seen going there. So we will oftentimes ask the police department if they could please run a a food box over, um, you know, to this client who's in safe housing, and so. You know, I just kind of want to widen the scope of what what we do ask our officers to do. Um, I live on a street that um has had uh definitely an increase in um some kind of criminal activity. And then I know that on my street, a lot of uh the homeowners um are trying to place calls to Silva PD. If they go on vacation to please increase patrols, just hey, I'm gonna be out of town for a week, could you just? You know, some of our streets are are fairly remote, so just can you do a drive-by and make sure that no one um is kind of there? Um, so. You know, and I won't take too much time giving you these anecdotal things, but I'll also kind of point out, I have a um. A hound dog who's a rescue, and she likes to take herself for a walk, and I got a call from Silva PD. That um an officer recognized my dog from his patrol route and stopped because he knew she was not supposed to be out and. Frankly, returned my dog to me before she ended up in the street. I know that's kind of trite, but I kind of want to point out that. He didn't have to take the time to do that, right? I mean, um, and that's obviously not being logged as a call for service, but it but it is definitely something that they do, is they pay attention. To neighborhoods and to people. Um. One of the reasons I moved within town limits is because I have a lot of experience with lots of different um agencies, and I wanted to live within the. Um, Silva town limits so that Silva PD would be the agency responding to me and my family. Um, all trash pickup and snowplows were also factored in there, but um I did appreciate um every interaction that I had with Silva PD. Um, I know that a lot of people, um, and please, um, if anyone has any questions, I'm trying to kind of zip through this so I don't take up too much of anyone's time, but um. We've been discussing crime rates a lot, right? Um, and and a lot of people have been. Saying that crime rates are going down, and I can tell you that the numbers do not tell the whole story. Um. Crime rates only indicate when people um initiate uh awareness of that criminal behavior, so it's only measuring crimes reported to the police. Um, I can tell you another number that went down for twenty twenty was child abuse numbers. Um, for those of us in the field, that was a horrible sign, it was a horrible sign. Because what that meant was that kids were stuck at home with their abusers, and they weren't making it to school to have their teachers report what they were seeing. And so crime rates going down doesn't necessarily mean that crime is going down, it means that. The numbers that are being reported or brought to the attention of the police are going down. Um, and I'm a quantitative researcher, I I do everything with numbers um to kind of. To to get a baseline of what we're looking at, but I can tell you that it paints a broad. It's broad brushstrokes, right? It's not giving you the full picture. Um, I was actually very jealous of the engineer's report because he can. Uh, he can look at the numbers and give you a remediation report and tell you exactly what needs to be done, and that's how you fix it. And my job is far more complicated because I deal with people, and um you can't exactly um. Pin it down to the numbers to fix these issues that we have, right? It's so much more complex than that. But what's very interesting is that when you improve police community relations, which again is what I think everyone wants to do. Is you want to know that if you call the cops, they're going to help you, you want your cops to help you, right? You want to know that they are going to be connected to individuals and agencies that can provide resources to help people get out of the system. Um, when we improve police community relations, I am letting you know right now, our crime rates will go up. Because when people are more comfortable calling law enforcement and approaching law enforcement, we will have more reports of activity. That doesn't mean crime is going up, that means our numbers are going up, because we're capturing more of the unreported crime to law enforcement. Um, when the Center for Domestic Peace opened, our domestic violence rates went up. Domestic violence didn't go up, but we had a service now in the community where people could physically walk in the door. And get assistance right away versus calling reach of Macon County to to ap- offer that assistance. I hope that's kind of clear, the difference between crime and crime rates. Um, some practical points of support. I, one of the things that um I know Chief Hatton has been wanting to do, and it's one of the things that we are really pushing in the field. Is sending every officer to CIT training, or that's crisis intervention training. Um, that gives officers additional skills in dealing with um, excuse me, individuals who might be experiencing mental health issues. If we don't have enough officers to cover those shifts, um, we can't pull officers to send them to this training, right? Um, COVID was kind of a weird uh period in time where things got switched to virtual, but a lot of these trainings are. Um, in-person trainings, and even if they're not, you need someone off, out of their. Car and, you know, behind a desk to kind of be able to take these trainings. So the irony is. The better trained we want our officers to be, the more officers we need to send officers to trainings. It's kind of a, you know, kind of a um circular situation here. Um. I had asked uh Chief Hatton for a list of um trainings that his officers were being sent to. Um, and I will tell you, looking at this region, Silva PD officers are ahead of the curve. Um, he, you know, sent his officers, the ones that he could spare, to um diversity training, to inclusivity training, to de-escalation training. All the things that we would want um our officers to have, so that when they do have interactions with individuals. Um, they are better prepared to identify what the issue is and to have the skills to de-escalate that situation, so it doesn't end up. Um, like the situation that we're seeing in the news. Um, from a practical point of view, um Silva PD is challenged to offer competitive salaries. I have uh students who've gone through BLET training. And I was like, hey, we've got positions open, and you know, and Silva, will you apply? And they said, well, other places pay more, right? I mean, it's kind of a basic thing, but what we do have is the ability to offer individuals um. To provide service to a thriving town, right? The town of Silva is a very desirable place to live, it's a desirable place to visit. Um, but when officers are working overtime or being called in on their days off, burnout builds in. And if you're gonna be burned out, you might as well be burned out and get paid as much as you can, do you know what I mean? So for us, um, morale is huge. Giving people vacation time's a big deal, making sure that we're not pulling them in on their days off is a big deal. Um, and we want to do that because we want to retain good officers. Um, if if nothing else changes in the li- in the next year, I would really love for us to stop having conversations. About um cops are, or, you know, students are, or. You know, uh, we we need to remember that this isn't just the Silva Police Department, these are individuals who are working within the police department, and we want the best people there we can get, because. I know if I call Silva PD, I want the officer responding to me or to my house to have the necessary training, to have the bandwidth. To deal with my crisis and not to just kind of think of me as another call that they have to take, because this is just part of their job, do you know what I mean? So um. It it's. I would like for them to not work on their days off. I don't want them burned out when they have to help, let me put it that way. Um, the other thing is that we want good officers in our patrol cars. Um, I have made a career out of trying to recruit people. To come to this field, to work in this field. Um, I want, when I look at my students and I have ethical, educated. Well-trained, sensitive, inclusive individuals, I want them to come work for us, do you know what I mean? And so um, the only way that we can do that is if we shift the conversation out of an us versus them model, which is how we've ended up with. Um, I don't know how we have backed ourselves into, we have the community and their needs, and then we have cops and their needs. Um, we're all on the same team. I mean, all our kids go to the same schools, we all shop at the same stores, I mean, you know, we all live here, and so. All of the people that I know that have chosen of a career in law enforcement have done it because they want to help. I mean, um, that's why you choose service jobs, right? You want to help. And so we have to change the conversation so that we are inviting them to the discussion of what does the future of policing look like? I think so far the conversation has been talking around law enforcement as opposed to having them have a seat at the table to saying, hey, how can you use these resources? And so um the first thing I did when um I kind of was getting up to speed here is. Um, I sat down with Chief Hatton to kind of have a, hey, let's talk about the future of policing conversation. Um, and I can tell you, one of the projects that I'm working on right now on campus, it's between me and professors in the Department of Social Work. And we're doing an analysis of what it looks like for rural areas to bring in crisis response agencies. Okay, so what does this look like? Um, and we have to do this project because very few rural areas um have mobile crisis teams for a number of reasons. But primarily because um they don't have the existing infrastructure ready to just plop that in there, the Kahoots Project, which um. I heard uh Chief Hatton talk about um is a really successful project, um, and I've read a lot of research about that. Um, they also started in a town that already had the money and the resources to mobilize very quickly. So think of this with regard to um vaccine creation and distribution. People are saying, wow, how did that vaccine happen so fast? Like, it seems like that was too fast. Well, we know that we've had the science, we were just ready to put the science into play when we needed to. And that is how mobile crisis units work. If you have the infrastructure in place, when you have the need, you can activate them. Um, we just aren't quite there yet. Doesn't mean we can't be there, but we're just not there right now. Again, I wanted to kind of point out that everyone who works with vulnerable populations in the town of Silva wants to divert them out of the criminal justice system, right? We all want to get ahead of the issue so that they are not having run-ins with law enforcement. We want, we want to kind of get these issues. You know, diverted, but in a rural area, say that we did have a. you know, diverted, but in a rural area, say that we did have a social worker on staff, say that we did have a mobile crisis unit. We have such a limited capacity of where to refer people to. We have limited drug treatment options. It's not just availability, it's cost, it's transportation. And we don't have a homeless shelter. We don't have a domestic violence shelter. So we could add all of these positions, but we, as a completely separate issue, need to figure out how we can even create diversion programs or create treatment programs so that we can even send these individuals to receive help. And if anyone works with local nonprofits in town, you know that we are literally at capacity right now, just spinning our wheels, trying to deliver services to the people that we come in contact with. So I think that all of these things are kind of converging to make it sound like it's one big issue, but they're really about six different issues that need to be handled separately. The other thing is something like a mobile crisis unit would require, it would be a shared resource. It would have to be a Jackson County shared resource so that Campus PD, Silva PD and Jackson County Sheriff's Department would all kind of use this resource. And so I think a good first step would be to pull together a team or a task force to have conversations about what that would look like, right? And that's part of the research I'm doing is trying to, trying to get a framework of what that looks like in rural areas. So some positive steps moving forward, I think Chief Hatton kind of alluded to this. He is probably a little bit more hesitant to share the, you know, the fullness of this. But we are right now in the process of trying to find the way that we could have a social work intern to Silva PD. This is a really, I think, good first step in trying to figure out how, when and where they can be used, right? So an intern, and this would be a master's level social work student who needs to do practical hours and is trained in this area, we would essentially be working with Silva PD to see how we can include social workers in helping. A follow-up to that is there, so the crisis response is one model. Another model is called a follow-up program. So when someone has contact with law enforcement and we, this person has no needs, mental health needs, addiction needs, whatever their needs may be, instead of a crisis response, i.e. you know, we bring the whole team out at that call. We then send a team out to do a follow-up conversation to help connect them with resources. And, you know, the preliminary research that I've done has said that this is in some ways maybe more effective because they're not in active crisis. I think sometimes when people are in active crisis, they have a really hard time communicating what their needs are. So this is, you know, assembling a team to then reach out to them to figure out how we can best help this person, say the next day or the next week. And the social work intern would be instrumental in kind of creating what this looks like. Let's see, I've got obviously a little set of notes here. Oh, and then of course, adding trained officers, training officers on connecting them with key people in the community, on what local resources are available so that they can patch them in, right? So, for example, I know that if I see someone on the street who clearly looks like they're having some housing instability, I can call here and they can, you know, send someone out to physically go have a conversation with this person. We have so many agencies in this town that are doing such great things and I think getting law enforcement getting those, building those relationships with those agencies, we can connect individuals to those agencies quicker by getting law enforcement officers aware of exactly who can help with what. And so that way we are kind of, while we're building these models to add non-serious personnel, we can also be moving towards helping them with the resources that we have right now. Okay, are there any questions? Sorry, that was a lot. Really quickly, I'm just sensitive to how much time you all have today.
That was a great amount of information and I want to see if anyone, does anyone have questions? Barbara?
I don't have a question, but I really appreciate all of this information. Because, and I, I really appreciate the presentation. It gives me a lot more thought of what is going on and I think it should help all of us. So thank you so much, Dr. Karavellis, for coming.
Yes, thank you. I'm Mary.
I just really liked the presentation. That was wonderful. I liked how you touched on quantitative data. When I think about criminal justice, I can't help but think of the game Clue. You never know how long a game is gonna last because the detective, the process, everything is unknown and, and so I appreciate you throwing that, that component in. Thank you.
You know, I also wanted to say, you know, I think, you know, we, we think of our officers as the people who respond to calls. And I mean, and if you think about it, no one's really happy unless you've called law enforcement to interact with them, right? I mean, whatever, anytime you get pulled over, you know, you're not thinking, hey, thanks so much for keeping our streets safe. You're thinking, man, like this is, you know. And so I think it's important to recognize that so many of our interactions feel negative because we're kind of coming in contact with them. But the truth is, if you, you know, and once COVID kind of eases up, I'm sure Chief Hatton would, I know lots of agencies do ride-alongs and stuff like that. I think that the number of times they, they, I mean, just some, truly something as simple as our officers on patrol are very aware of what the neighborhoods they're patrolling, what should look normal. Does that make sense? Is something like a gate is open or doors open and it shouldn't be? I saw David shaking his head. You know, it's sorry, I totally asked my turn without, I simply was trying to say that I know the individuals personally who work with our police department. I know individuals personally who have had negative experiences with people in law enforcement, right? I understand that it feels like we are completely different pages. And I can tell you that at the end of the day, if we can get on the same page and if we can improve trust with each other, then I think that we can move towards helping each other together. I think that lack of trust makes officers feel defensive. I think lack of trust makes the community not want to involve law enforcement, not want to come in contact with them. But I can tell you that right now for a town our size, they are the first people that, that can connect community members with resources. They are. I mean, that's all we have. You know, when I work with domestic violence victims, they have so many comorbidities going on, right? They have addiction, they have housing insecurity, they have child abuse. I mean, they have so many issues going on. And I absolutely need someone who can help keep them safe on the team. I do. I mean, we have lots of social workers who we work with. We have lots of mental health professionals who we work with. And we also have lots of offenders who want to hurt people who work with them. Do you know what I mean? So I don't want to alienate our law enforcement officers because I personally rely on them to help keep our victims safe, especially when stuff starts to go sideways. And even if we bring in mental health, even if we bring in social workers, you still want an officer who is trained to mitigate a situation because if, you know, the history of Jackson County and domestic violence, you know that is a very real possibility that something that looks like it's under control is not under control, right? So, I mean, there's a reason why our therapy dog for the Center for Domestic Peace is a ninety-pound German Shepherd. And that's because we are working in scenarios and we're working in systems where th- this is not hypothetical for us, right? This is real for us. This is, people want to do harm. And so frankly, if my officers are picking up, you know, closing doors and checking for doors, I want them to be able to respond in about sixty seconds flat if someone is now tailing me because I was working on a case. So that, that's just kind of the, the entirety of the picture. I hope, sorry, I get a little bit heated when I talk about this stuff because I mean, it's, most of us don't have contact with law enforcement. Most of us don't recognize that we are all two decision points away from needing help. We really are, right? I mean, things can escalate very quickly, so. You know, I will say that I feel, I feel much better being within town limits when I'm working and when I'm living because I know that our officers care. And I know that seems trite, but I think it's a really important point and I want them to keep caring. So I want them to feel like they're part of this conversation, sort of alienating them from this conversation. Because if they become disinterested in helping us, then I can put fifty social workers on the street. Doesn't mean that they're gonna be able to respond to calls without law enforcement, pulling them into those cases, right? Because we will still call law enforcement for those cases. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Karavellis. Yes, Greg?
Yeah, so you mentioned CIT training and this is one of the training that, that the chief is doing with his officers. I just want to make sure that, like, those officers aren't taking time that they're not supposed to be taking to do those. So I'm just wondering, what's your experience building training into a police officer's schedule?
So the way that it works is that officers have to have a certain number of continuing education credits a year, right? So this kind of regular training that we have to have. And we, part of that is you can pick and choose the kinds of trainings that you do to kind of make sure that you're staying current with the field. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be extra time, meaning it wouldn't be like overtime and Chief Hatton can jump in here if I'm speaking out of line. It's just if we have more individuals to kind of put into the rotation, we can change, we can shift the schedules in a way to where their time, so say that you have four officers who can be on shift. If three can cover that shift and do their job, you can take the fourth officer and put them in training during their regular shift time. So that way you're getting both coverage. Whereas if we right now only have two officers, we can't pull one off of shift and only leave one on the street because the minute that that person is tied up on a call, then, you know, you truly have no one else for the next call coming in. And law enforcement is such a weird profession because some days you have nothing going on, right? Some days you are literally driving around on patrol and frankly, that's when you start to get nervous because you're like, man, this phone's about to blow up, right? It's almost like, you know, the calm before the storm. And some days you respond to sixteen calls and it feels like it is never-ending. And so it's so hard to kind of pick and choose how many officers do I need to get the job done because you don't even know what the job is before any shift. It just really depends. I think we're kind of in a good situation in town where downtown is thriving, restaurants are opening, businesses are doing better, people are coming in, right? That they're wanting to be here. At the same time, the people kind of coming in don't necessarily know that our streets are one-way streets or, you know, there, there's so many kind of situations that that increases to where we oftentimes do need to have more calls for service and sometimes little calls, sometimes big calls. But even if you just think about it, even just having an officer available to walk around downtown, right? Just to have positive interactions with people. And I think that's, that's one of the things that's really challenging with the way that we are is we are right now only having negative interactions with law enforcement. We are only calling them to respond to things. We are only getting tickets. We are only putting them at traffic stops, right? We are not having positive interactions. And community-oriented policing is something that we've had since the seventies. It kind of came out of post-Civil War era, I'm sorry, Civil Rights era where we realized things were really contentious between law enforcement and civilians. And what we did was we decentralized police to get them out of Cop Carson into our community so that they could walk and talk to people and kind of have conversations, right? So if we can increase these positive interactions, then it's something as simple as people saying, okay, I get it, you know, police are here to help. I can talk to them about different things. Or frankly, even they can see things more on the street than they can just driving down Main Street, which takes like, you know, point two seconds to do. So, yeah, I think that kind of having additional officers, you can play around more with these models that work versus just answering calls, right? Responding to calls. I think that is obviously one portion of the job, but I think that improving police relations, because they are in a town this size, the individuals we do have to kind of connect people with agencies, I think, you know, kind of makes sense for where we are right now.
Thank you, Dr. K. Oh, excuse me, Ben?
Yeah, hi there. Thanks again for being here today and kind of, you know, giving your presentation. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, some of the similarities that the emergency department and the police department have. We're there twenty-four hours a day and we get a lot of stuff that's not an emergency. But the reason that comes in a lot of things that aren't emergencies come in the door is because we're there twenty-four hours a day and there's nobody else to take care of these things. And there's a lot of similarities with the police department. There's just nobody else there. And, you know, people call police for, law enforcement for whatever and they have to respond and they do respond because they're there. And it goes back to this staffing thing as well. Some days in ER, you know, we're, we're just sitting around. Other days, we're just, we're just getting blown away. And you can't turn people away. You know, you have to take on whatever comes to the door. It's not one of these things, it's, you know, business comes to us. We're not out looking for business and, and law enforcement is the same way. It just, it's, it's so hard to predict what's going to happen. And, and really, whether it's, you know, the, the emergency department or law enforcement, a lot of times we're just, we're just there. And I can relate to law enforcement, to Silva PD, that they do a lot of things that they're really not, you know, trained to do per se, but they do it and because no one else is there to do it. And I think that goes back to, you know, getting the training, you know, and, and working with Chief Hatton, who seems to be open to taking on more, being better trained to take on more duties that he's already really doing and just, and doing a better job of them. And, you know, the other thing I wanted to talk about is there's, I've been getting lots of emails and lots of, you know, folks contacting me about, you know, you know, getting social services involved in the police department. And I think that's great, you know, giving, you know, giving them a tool, but also showing them how to use it. But whether or not that's actually applicable to a small town like Silva PD, whether a, a social worker is gonna help. And I, I want to add that we have, I see people on a regular basis that are unfortunately stuck in this revolving door, who have access to services. They come in whether it's addiction or mental illness. We see them on a regular basis, involuntarily committed in the, in the emergency department. We have social services that come and talk to them and place them, that whether it's, you know, addiction services or, or mental health services, they're in an inpatient, they go through, they get stabilized, they come out and they come back. And, you know, and it's these, it, it's hard, you know, it, it's not just having social workers and addiction medicine or addiction specialists. At the same, there's a lot of folks that I hate to say it can't be helped. And, you know, whether, any, no matter, no, no amount of resources is gonna theoretically help folks. They keep coming around and around. I remember when I was doing a lot of addiction medicine, I could, I would know folks that were sent to me because they had court-ordered, you know, buprenorphine treatment. And, you know, I helped those folks the same way as I would anyone else. But they were there because they were forced to be there and they weren't there because they had insight and they were seeking treatment. The folks that do have insight and are really wanting to get out of things, those are the folks that are successful. So it's, my point is it's not just getting access to social services that, you know, there's bigger issues. There's, there's housing, there's, you know, domestic violence. There's just so much. And the point is that these social problems we have in this country, in this state, in this town are huge and complicated and hard to fix. And by throwing more resources at them, that's a start, but we have to throw, throw resources in a smart way and find ways to help the thing, to, to fix the problems we can fix. I mean, just start with the low hanging fruit. And, and I think that law enforcement can definitely be, be part of that. And I, I just wanted to put that out there that it's, it's a, it's a hard problem. All these are really hard problems, really complicated. And it's gonna require long-term thinking and it's gonna require more resources.
Ben, if I can say one more thing. I think the issue that we have right now is that we have completely dehumanized each other, right? I mean, we have turned people into, you know, this person's a drug addict or this person's a cop or this person is whatever. And I think that is not helping us help people. So if, for me, I think the reason why I truly have one foot on both sides, right? I mean, I teach students who want to go into this field. I give talks on the history of the Black Lives Matter movement. I am teaching, giving, presenting in an hour on, you know, discussing controversial things, right? I mean, it's, and for me, at the end of the day, what it comes down to is I want to make sure that when an officer shows up to the scene, they are not seeing drug addicts. They are seeing this as a person who has experienced trauma, has limited resources to get out of that. Do you know what I mean? Like, I want them to feel that. And the only way that they can feel that is if I see that they too are just a person responding to the scene. And so I guess I'm trying to walk back this conflict of, you know, do we want to give cops money? Do we not want to give them money? For me, it's, who do we have responding? Because that, think of what a huge difference one person can make if that person feels like they are part of the team versus not part of the team. For me, that's what it's about is if we let them have a seat at the table and if we are talking with them, if they are a stakeholder with us, we can then say, hey, look, when you're responding, this is what's going on. This person, yes, it's a revolving door. This is why they can't get out of the system. These are the resources we have. We can try, you know, we can do, you know, getting trained in two weeks to start teaching a class in a prison facility, taking Western Carolina students into a correctional facility to teach incarcerated students and non-incarcerated students together to show people who are incarcerated, hey, look, there are so many options available here. This is how you get access to them, right? Like, education's important. So I just, I want to be careful because I know that for a lot of people, it's funny the academic is saying this, but I know for a lot of people, this is an academic exercise in like ideology or the cops are good or bad ideologically, are, is shifting towards non-sform personnel good or bad ideologically? In this town, right now, we have people on the street responding to calls. I want to give them whatever support I can give them so that they make good choices when they respond to those calls. And I can't do that by alienating them and saying, hey, you're the bad guy now, come help me. Like, that, that's not going to help. And so I'm honestly just trying to change the conversation so that we are all talking about this person-to-person so that when they respond, that's a person, right? That's not a cop, that's a person. That's someone who, again, whose kids go to my school, who shop at Ingles behind me. That's a person. And when they're responding, this is not just someone who's passed out from an overdose. This is someone who's someone's child or someone's parent, right? So I mean, I don't know, I just, I just really want us to, to stop making this such a sides thing and start recognizing that we don't get to hit the timeout button here in society and go, okay, everyone to your corners, let's rework the wheel. Like, we don't, calls are coming in all the time. And so we have to do a really good job of what do we have right now? What are we working with right now? How can we best use those resources? And how do we start turning the wheel so that we, it can look more like the system we want it to look like, right? I almost feel like on that little bulldozer, trying to get the evergreen unstuck, right? Like, I mean, heaving as hard as I can, but I can't paint some perfect picture of what this system could look like. That's not functional, right? I can't say, in a perfect world, someone who overdosed would get this wraparound team and they would get this assistance and we place them in this housing. That doesn't exist. And we don't have enough money in the town of Silva, let alone in the state of North Carolina, to actually solve that problem, right? What we can do is make each step that we make can be one step closer to the goal that we want it to be. And the only way that I know how to do that is to sit down with the officers we currently have to make sure that they also see people as people that they're responding to, that these are not calls, these are not cases. These are people, right? So um, as you can tell, I get a little bit impassioned about talking about this stuff. I just, um, it's, it's just very real, you know, it's very real. And I think I'm in such the deep end of these cases, usually by the time I'm involved, really bad stuff has happened. And so I just want to make sure that um we get our law enforcement to have the proper training to where we can stop things before, before it gets to my plate, right? I, I want, I want to connect them with the resources and hopefully change this conversation so we can help things. Like Ben said, with the low-hanging fruit, help them before they, help them the first time that they overdose, not, not the, the fifth time. Not, not kind of keeping people in the system. And if anybody would like to talk about this further, honestly, like, I mean, I'm absolutely available um to discuss, you know, the profession, the system, other models that we have in place. Um, I will be presenting, once we finish this project with social work, um, what, what it would look like to have mobile crisis as a shared resource, how other counties have done that. I mean, we're actively looking at that right now. So I just, I just want to kind of, I know this is a, a much larger conversation that we have the time for, but please feel free to reach out to me if anybody would like to discuss this further.
Thank you, Dr. Caravellis. And could you put your contact information in the chat box?
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions? We really appreciate the information. So, thank you. There's no other business on our agenda, so I will call for a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. Wait, Barbara's question.
Barbara. I just wanted to thank Eric because he has persevered for us for a long time and I really appreciate all he does for us.
Thank you, Eric. We have a motion to adjourn. I apologize for not getting Barbara's comment first. I will ask, is there any discussion about adjourning? Then I will ask um Amanda to take the role.
Barbara.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
David. Mary.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.